Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Lord, that's good and loud. Can you hear that okay, Greg? Yeah. Just checking. Oh, boy, this is a regular meeting, the last regular meeting of Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, for the year of our Lord 2024. It's the 17th of December. For those of y'all that are shopping, you don't have much time left. Just thought I'd throw that out there. And Amazon probably quits running on December 24th at midnight, so y'all remember that, too, okay? Well, it started out to be a short agenda, turned out to be a quite long agenda today. So we do have a lot of business before the court. But the record show we do have Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitby are present, and myself, and we do have business to take care of today. So if you would all rise. I'll get the pledges, okay? Third flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And if y'all will pray with me, please. Years ago, an old fiddle play and mentor of mine had a saying that he would always tell me every time he saw me. I think he probably had a good reason to do so. But we talk about, when we talk about the Lord, talk about Jesus a lot. And being in that particular business, I can understand why he would be adamant about instilling that thought in young people's minds. And of course, at that time, I was quite young. But he would always say that he came to square the deal on all of the inequities that we've lived out or even thought of. So you should remember, he has a limited time offer for you. It's one of salvation through his gift of grace in your faith. It expires when you do. That's the gift. Isaiah 9:6, if y'all would pray with me, please. For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. In his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty Lord, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Heavenly Father, on this Christmas Day, this Christmas season, we thank you for the greatest gift, your Son, Jesus Christ. May his love fill our hearts and guide our actions as we reach out to others in need and share the joy of this season. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
All righty. Well, we have no notices or proclamations today that I can recall or see on the list. Also, no public comment. Nobody signed up. Sheriff, how about that today? Yeah, okay. No, that make you feel good. It makes me feel good, too. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare today? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have any add-ons, Angela or Kim?
Yes, we have two add-ons. They're budget amendments. One is for emergency management to increase that salary, and the other is for fire marshal to increase that salary. And it's only increasing it by the nine months that are remaining of this year.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion considering the consent agenda? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. And that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item 8.1 from Commissioner Korbowski, consider and approve the adoption of private road 442 into the county maintenance program. This road is currently being used as access to the precinct 1 County Barn. So is that your county barn on this side of the river or the other side of the river? 14 no doubt. Motion from Greg, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.2 from Ms. McCarty, Mr. Poston over the county attorney's office. Consider and approve general interlocal agreement between Liberty County Road and Bridge Precinct 3 and the city of Plum Grove, allowing both entities to contract in future for mutually beneficial public purposes. And this is just a standard interlocal.
Yes, this is your standard interlocal. And then item number three is specific to roads.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.3, of course, consider and approve interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct 3 and the city of Plum Grove for repair and grading of streets.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.4 from our tax attorneys over at LimeBurger. Good morning. Consider and approve the following bids on delinquent tax properties. There's C Ellison, property ID number 50577, for $4,000. And number two was W. Cook, property ID number 95671, for $7,000. Y'all had the opportunity to look at this?
Yes, I have. After looking at these, I make a motion to approve one, deny two.
Okay. Motion from Bruce to approve number one and deny number two. Got a second from Greg. Is there any further discussion? No discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.5, consider and approve a letter from the county judge to Entergy Texas Incorporated confirming no zoning or building ordinance is requiring approval for the project Lone Star. Just one of those deals that they requested a letter. And it, Catherine, I believe we looked it over, and there was no objections from legal on this.
Correct. No objections.
Great.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.6, it's an information item. So it's going to require maybe a little bit of discussion. Said, I don't mind that. That's what we're here for. Discuss the certificates of occupancy notification process and classify which department has the authority to issue these, as considered in local government code, et cetera. We let that count a broad interpretation for a reason. Do we really have the authority to issue certificates of occupancy? And if we do, then who is going to do it? That's the question. Catherine, what have you come up with on that regard?
Sure. So I have been speaking with the state fire marshal's office because we have recently, given our current situation, a lot of businesses in our county have called multiple departments. I know we've all talked to different businesses about obtaining certificates of occupancy. Well, the state fire marshal's office has come in and they've been helping us out a great deal. But what I've recently learned myself is that the state fire inspection is just a small part in what is required to obtain a certificate of occupancy. The state fire marshal that I spoke with said that it's really just a checklist, and it is up to a business owner to have all of the things that meet the requirements for a certificate of occupancy, including the fire inspection. And so, yes, do we have the authority to do it? Absolutely. I spoke with them, and I asked, well, who typically does certificates of occupancy? And they said typically it is not the fire marshal's office who issues them. It's usually building departments. We don't have a building department. And we kind of talked about different departments that we do have here in Liberty County, and they suggested the permitting department be over that. And it's not necessarily whoever is responsible for this for Liberty County, it's not... What I understand is that it is not additional inspections that need to be done, or they don't have to gather the material. It's simply a checklist. They have to make sure they meet all of their requirements, and then if they do, they print out the certificate of occupancy.
Let me ask you. Pretty obviously, we should have a fire marshal named today. It's my anticipation.
We certainly have a recommendation.
Okay, recommendation. Okay, so there's potential. Chief Nelson, I see you're here. What's your take on the fire marshal issue? Because they're going to do the square footage calculation and then go by the code as to how many people, bodies you can fit in a particular area.
Yes, we definitely need to have a fine examiner of lots. And then when they get the right number, and I'm not sure if you are going to allow to do the occupancy certificate, but the permit department will be a good option. They just relay their information over to the permanent department, they issue their certificate.
Yeah. My thoughts on that, I don't want to overwhelm permitting with another chore that would create another argument at some point in time. And I know it will, because it, different folks have different ideas about how many people you can fit into a room. And it, y'all want to weigh in, Greg or Bruce or David?
Well, like I said, the permit department is kind of over...
They're overwhelmed.
With their responsibilities now. I would like for, since we are choosing a fire marshal, that put under one of his duties instead of the permanent department, because she still probably doesn't know or have the people to do this.
Right.
Well, yes, we don't have anybody that can do that. I mean, just a checklist, that would be fine. But, you know, someone's going to have to sign off on it, and we're not qualified to sign off on the requirement, you know? Even if we get the inspection from the state fire marshal, we really aren't sure what we're looking at, because I don't have an engineer on staff, so we don't have anybody that can do this, man, we can't do anything like that.
Yeah. Catherine, would it be, I mean, we're going to, it's information owners, there's no, take no action on this anyway.
Oh, absolutely. This is just discussion.
Let's see where we land today.
Oh, absolutely. I would say this, the state fire marshal's office, you know, just to be 100% transparent, suggested that it not lie with the fire marshal's department.
Okay. We'll take that in consideration. All right. My suggestion is to take no action.
Make a motion, take no action.
Motion from Bruce, and second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. And we will revisit this. And number 8.7 from Mr. C. Approve and execute a contract with Crowder Gulf LLC selected by Commissioners Court on November 12, 2024, as the secondary awarded vendor for number 25-01 Disaster Debris Removal Services.
It's just as it states, it can alter a contract in case our primary vendor is unavailable.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.8 from Mr. C. Consider and approve the purchase of a new truck in the amount of $35,830 from Caldwell Country Chevrolet through buy board contract number 734-23 for Engineering and Permits Department. You're probably getting pretty poor on trucks over there, aren't you? I thought so.
We've got still pushing on 2017 and 2018.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.9 from Mr. C. Consider and approve soliciting invitation to bid number 24-06 for body armor. And this is just the, approve the solicitation.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.10 from Mr. C. Consider, approve, and execute a memorandum of understanding between Liberty County and the Liberty County Purchasing Department for the purchase of vehicles designated for public safety use utilizing ARPA funds. Now, this is going to be some leftover money we've got out there.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.11 from Mr. C. Consider and approve soliciting invitation to bid number 2507 for new vehicles for law enforcement to be purchased with ARPA funds. Leave that pretty much explanatory.
Make a motion to approve.
I just want to make sure that when we do these bids, I think everyone is aware, but because they're ARPA, they have to follow the federal guidelines, not the state. So we put it in there.
That means on the vendor and also what the contract is. Okay.
Second.
Greg, okay. Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.12 from Mr. C. Consider approve and execute a memorandum of understanding between Liberty County and Liberty County Purchasing Department to obligate $255.21 in ARPA funds toward the countywide radios project. Well, we're big spending on that one, aren't we?
I can say there's a reason that we let it at that low amount. It's because of the rules that ARPA has us following so that we could leave that project open for later use.
Lord knows somebody's going to need an antenna, and that would probably pay for an antenna. Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.13 from Mr. C. Consider approve and execute the agreement with Cadence Bank for a 48-month traditional loan in the amount of $100,981.85, the payoff of remaining balance of equipment lease purchase agreement dated July the 10th, 2018. It's a Mac, 2023 Mac Pinnacle 65R tractor truck with dump body for precinct four. Angela, we need to discuss this a little bit, or is that just going to be a?
Well, the note's not going to change any at all. Talking with the auditor's office and stuff, and I do make a motion to approve this, since it will be no change at all in what we're paying.
Good.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.14 from Mr. C. Consider and approve the award of invitation to bid number 2503, the sale of surplus laptop.
Nick, is there somebody out there that actually buys these things?
We have one bidder.
Had one bidder? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, the second from David, to sell a laptop. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That laptop is sold. Number 8.15 from Ms. Soliday over at Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve the request from River Ranch for the Phase 5 development to keep the original street names. Okay?
Okay. I have checked with the CAD on us being able to do this, and they have also gone through the list of names for the River Ranch subdivision development and made sure there's no duplicates. So therefore, we are good to go. That's all right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Keep the names out of River Ranch. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.16 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve request from Ellison Development of Gemini Section 1 to keep their original street names. And I believe...
This is the same thing as I always make sure from CAD to make sure we don't have any duplicate names. We've always, in the past, changed everything to county roads. It was just easier for the nine-on-one system. But they are allowed to request this, and if I make sure there's no duplications through CAD, we should be good to go. And she did say that there are no duplicates.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.17 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the road bond for Gemini subdivision. Okay.
This is the subdivision in precinct three. I didn't have the bond available, the completed bond available when the packets were made, but I put one on each one of your stations. It's signed, ready to go. It's through the Ellison Development and the Gemini subdivision. And the road bond is $904,900.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, the second from David, to approve. That's over near the deck of the woods.
Yes. Very nice subdivision.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.18 from Mr. Brown. Brother Rick, we got, consider and approve the new copier for platinum copiers for the Cleveland Tax Office at a cost of $111.82. Man, you're reaching way down in there in the pocket.
Yeah. Of course, we've added a fourth person up there, and just an update on the remodel, they laying out the desk, they've torn down the closet. So I think we'll be operational in the next few days, so appreciate that.
Hallelujah. Okay.
Increase our capacity by 25%, even though the population has increased by 75%. But we're still pushing to get there.
We're struggling. Yeah.
But the copier, basically, we operate a little small HP copiers. It's kind of on its last phase. Our scanners are kind of conking out as well. And then with the additional person up there, the volume increasing. So I contacted Nick, and rather than look at purchasing, some kind of deal, get on the same thing that all the other county offices are using with the platinum copier or something. We're asking permission to go forward with that purchase lease.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.19 from Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve no through truck traffic on a 1.8-mile portion of County Road 109 North, located in precinct one.
That's 109 South.
109 South. We're going to make that change right now. Located in precinct one, Liberty County, Texas, transportation code 251.152. We had a public hearing on this yesterday.
Yes, this is the last step in what has been a somewhat lengthy process in order to put up a sign for no through truck traffic on this portion of roadway. The county took out the requisite notice in a paper of general circulation. We had a public hearing yesterday. To my knowledge, there was no one contest this. So upon approval today, Commissioner Korbowski has the authority to put up a no-through-truck traffic sign. Again, for the public's knowledge, this does not mean traffic cannot travel down that roadway. This is to protect the roadway from heavy trucks.
Make a motion to approve.
From David? Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Catherine. Number 8.20 from Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve the development agreement between Liberty County and Sterling Traditions LLC.
Yes. Sterling Traditions has been in front of the court several times, I believe. This is just to finalize the development agreement between Liberty County and Sterling Traditions. I believe it's contained in your packet. I would recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 21 from our county auditor. Consider and approve transferring ARPA funds from the countywide radios project to the law enforcement vehicles project in the amount of $250,000. Obligated funds for the law enforcement vehicle project will increase to $818,694.22. We're getting down to the last come and get me on this ARPA fund business, and we don't want to lose any of the funding that we have available. And this is one way to make sure that we have the opportunity to use all that's been offered. So I'll ask...
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.22 from the county auditor. Consider and approve transferring unobligated ARPA funds from the city of Ames Rehabilitation Project to the law enforcement vehicles project in the amount of $165,758.89. Total obligated funds of law enforcement vehicle project will increase to $984,453.11. This is just going to be another little addition to it.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8.23 from the county attorney's office.
Do we want to move this to executive session?
Yeah, I think probably 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27 will move to executive session. So let's roll off on those. We can just move down.
Judge, I would ask that on item number 26, the court take no action at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
26.
Number 26.
Can we just, can we handle this after executive session?
If you so choose.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Well, I won't be bringing it up in executive session.
So let's move down to... So let's move down to item number eight, 28 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the award and the conditional execution of the contract for Liberty County's ARPA project for Hull Freshwater District, number one, in the amount of $988,000.
We talked about this and had her in last Commissioners Court. We did get the funding on it.
So they actually went in and lowered the amounts. They're not going to do Phase One, only Phase Two.
Right.
And the contract reads that Liberty County will only be responsible for $800,000 of this amount of the $988,000.
Yeah.
And they did show us statements that said they have the money available to cover their part.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 29, consider and approve me as HGAC's Transportation Policy Council, primary voting member, and Bruce Karbowski as an alternate voting member. Pretty self-explanatory. And I'm willing to go fight the battle for dollars for roads.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Number eight, 30, consider and approve me as HGAC's Transportation Advisory Committee, primary voting member, and Greg Arthur as an alternate voting member. As y'all know, these two go hand in hand. One dictates to the other at HGAC on what makes it finally to the call for projects. I enjoy going and arguing for more money for Liberty County, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Okay. Well, we have executive session items next. Catherine, that's the way you're looking at it? That's the way I'm seeing it?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David to move into executive session. It is now, oh, about 10, no, 9:48. Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. We are in executive session. Okay, welcome back, everybody. It's about 10:55 and we're out of the executive session, back in regular section, session. Of course, the items that we considered, I'll bring them up as we discuss those. Item number one would coincide with item number 27 on the agenda, which was discuss economic development incentives for Liberty County, Texas with Project Juniper Development Team. And I believe that through our discussions, we do have at least an agreement or at least a direction to go, let's say, the court. Yeah.
Make a motion to give you a letter to Bueller for the. No payment.
No payment consideration?
Yes.
Motion from Bruce, the second from David. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. The second item that we discussed was on the question on some real property, exchange of real property, which would? 23, yeah, it's way up there. There it is. Boys, thank y'all. Consider and approve offer from First Liberty Bank to convey the Liberty, to Liberty County, the property owned by First Liberty Bank located at 311 Travis Street, Liberty, Texas, 77575 Exchange, where the county conveying to First Liberty Bank, the property owned by Liberty County and located at 1801 Trinity in Liberty, Texas, 77575, with the difference in consideration to be agreed upon in the real estate sales contract to be negotiated between the seller and the buyer. I believe the question would be to order up an appraisal for both properties. Would that be correct?
Make a motion to accept and to order appraisal on both pieces of property.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, the second from David to order up appraisals on both properties and consider the negotiation. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. In the matter of, number two on the executive session, but. Speaker? Yeah, it is. Okay, number 24, consider and approve recommendations and potential appointment from the interview and performance review board for the position of Liberty County Fire Marshal. I believe we had the opportunity to go over the findings of the review board and the rankings of the potential appointees and with all considerations and, and the rankings, the considered, let's say, the court.
Board recommended Nathan Green, is that right?
Yes.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Nathan Green.
Comments, Helen.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? So Ms. Harris, if you'd let Mr. Green know and all the other notifications you need to give him so he can take care of business.
The court will allow that as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am. Please. And then the next would be for the consent, number 25, consider, approve recommendations of potential appointment from the interview and performance review board for the position of Liberty County Emergency Management Coordinator. And after careful review by the board, and we had a consideration through the rankings, let's say, the court.
Make a motion to consider the review board's recommendation of Antoine Johnson.
Motion from Bruce, is that a motion? Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from David to appoint Antoine Johnson as emergency management coordinator.
To be clear, I believe you said motion to consider. Did you? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Write that down on my book. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Ms. Harris, if you'll take care of that notification as well.
Yes, sir. Happy to.
The, the last one was the considering and approve recommendations, potential appointment being made by the county judge for the position of precinct four commissioner of Liberty County.
Make a motion to take no action.
Take no action. Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take no action. Motion from Bruce, the second from David to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Merry Christmas, everybody.